Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, December 17, 2015. Gentlemen, do we have our update show? Let me start. Want to run it?
Good evening and welcome to this edition of the North Penn News School Board Update. Congratulations to Dr. Barbara Galloway and Joyce Hurst for being named as two of the Superintendent Honor Roll Award recipients for the 2015-2016 school year. Barbara Galloway is the principal of Penfield Middle School and has been with the district for eighteen years. She is a true advocate for her students and uses a holistic approach to ensuring the academic, emotional, and social successes of her students. Last year, she welcomed Hatfield Elementary School with open arms during their year away from their home school during renovations. And, as the challenges of education today have increased, the performance of her staff and students has continued to be superior. Congratulations to Dr. Galloway on her award. And later in the day, the ESC's Joyce Hurst was also surprised with the second Superintendent's Honor Roll Award. Joyce has worked for the district for thirty-three years in the business department. Joyce's dedication to North Penn is second to none, as she will often stay late and will pick up extra assignments when necessary. She is a proud supporter of North Penn athletics and attends all-home basketball and football games with her husband, John. Her dedication and loyalty to North Penn both in and out of the workplace is greatly appreciated. Congratulations once again to Joyce Hurst and to Barb Galloway for their recognition, and we thank you for your outstanding dedication to the students and staff of the North Penn School District. On Thanksgiving Day, the stands of Crawford Stadium were once again occupied for the first annual Alumni Football Takeover of the Thanksgiving Day Crosstown Classic. Over one thousand people were on hand to watch former North Penn and Lansdale Catholic Football Team members play an old-fashioned game of flag football. Held as part of the district's fiftieth anniversary celebrations, the game was a huge success. Honorary captains for the day included former Lansdale Catholic coach Jim Algejo, WNPV radio personality Jim Church, former North Penn Athletic Director Doc Ryan, and lifelong North Penner Linda Law. From the first snap, LC dominated the nights, winning by a score of fifty-five to forty-five. Although the Crusaders proudly hoisted the inaugural trophy, the day was about creating new memories and new community traditions for both teams alike. The North Penn High School staff was recognized by the North Penn School Board and the district's administration for their outstanding School Performance Profile Score. North Penn High School was ranked tenth in the state in the SPP with a score of ninety-seven point six. The staff gathered for a special meeting where Superintendent Kurt Dietrich thanked them and expressed his and the board's gratitude for their outstanding efforts to achieve this amazing score. The staff was invited to partake in a smorgasbord of goodies from the culinary students at the North Monco Technical Career Center, compliments of the board and the administration for a job well done. And finally, another longstanding North Penn tradition takes place on Monday night. The annual North Penn High School Winter Concert begins at 7:30 PM in the high school's auditorium. Come and enjoy the amazing talents of our students this holiday season. If you cannot make it out, be sure to turn on North Penn Television as we cover the festivities live, starting at 7:30 PM. Enjoy your holiday season and may your new year be merry and bright.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Welcome. Before we move forward, the board would like to announce that it had an executive session tonight, December 17, 2015, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of potential litigation.
And if I may say, Mr. President, as a result of that discussion and executive session, I am adding an item to the agenda, and that item will read, "Recommend approval of settlement agreement and mutual release with Little Builders Incorporated." And that has to do with a dispute we had over some construction matters at the AM Culp Elementary School. So I will be adding that under the agenda as item...
Seventy.
Seventy.
Under other business. So the public's been notified, the board, please note the agenda change. All right, it is now time for our audience of citizens, those wishing to speak to the board, please feel free to state your name and address and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome the new members to the board. And I know that we're all working for a common goal and for an outcome which makes the district, as they said, one of the tenth most impressive districts in the Commonwealth. And we're all need to be very satisfied that the work that was put in is providing really good results. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the upcoming negotiations with the Educational Association, the teachers' union. I want you to know that the medical program that they have is a Cadillac program, and no longer you're going to be able to have that. So I hope in negotiations that the union is mindful that we cannot offer this kind of program anymore because we will not pay the forty percent tax. And I don't know how that's going to come because people that are used to getting excellent medical program, excellent insurance, may not be too happy with that, but that has to be taken care of. Also, another, the Act One, which I believe is two point four, I hope we stay within the parameters because if you have a large wage negotiation, I don't see how that you'll be able to stay within that. My taxes went up four hundred dollars this last time, and if I were to do that on an annual basis, I'd be paying like ten thousand dollars, and I don't envision myself wanting to pay ten thousand, and I like it in the neighborhood. But finally, what I want to really talk about is the presentation by the developmental group which wants to improve the property at 3,000 Campus Drive, which has been empty for a very long time. I don't think the district makes a whole lot of money from it. I think after doing a lot of thinking and looking into this, if that were to come and be implemented, I think we could all, it would be very beneficial to the developer, to those that would find employment there, and to the district. And I'm usually against things right away, but after giving this some thought, I thought that would be really a good contribution to the district for a long time that that property is doing nothing right now. So I would like to speak in support of that proposal. But I hope that the year that's coming up, 2016, will be a productive year and one that everyone is able to say that they made a contribution, they gave a little bit, and they were able to enjoy all the things that the district brings to all the stakeholders, the kids and everybody, the professional satisfaction which the staff get. So I want to thank you for all that you do, and good luck on 2016.
Thank you. Thank you, anyone else, please? All right. Recommend approval of the minutes from the November 19, 2015, action meeting as well as the minutes from the reorganization meeting held on December 7, 2015 as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions to those issues? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go with committee reports, and we'll start with Education, Community, and Policy. This is Leonard.
Thank you. We have not had a meeting since our last school board meeting, and our next meeting will be held January 11 at 6:30 here at the ESC.
Thank you. Any questions of ECP? Finance. Mr. O'Donnell, you have...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Finance Committee Report, an update from the meeting of November 30, 2015, under New Business. The monthly financial reports were reviewed with additional discussions on the following items. The Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistant Act, LERTA, proposal. Mr. Carmen Atalia, hopefully I pronounced that right, presented the request as a representative of turn fourteen. A LERTA provides for a ten-year phase-in of real estate taxes for new construction in distressed areas. Taxes will be phased in at a ten percent per year until the property is fully taxed after ten years. The site in question has been vacant for twenty-plus years and is located in Hatfield Township. A callback provision was discussed which would allow the district to collect the full amount of real estate taxes if turn fourteen vacates the property before the end of the ten-year LERTA agreement. An agreement is being developed by the Solicitor's Office. A state budget update. As of then, the proposed state framework, the proposed state budget framework as of November 24th was reviewed by the committee. This included additional three hundred and fifteen million in basic education funding, fifteen million in special education funding, pension reform, liquor privatization, new revenues and sales tax and gaming changes, and cyber charter tuition rates. The 2016-17 budget, proposed budget calendar, the deadline will be posted, the deadline to post the 2016-17 preliminary budget for public inspection is December 31. The preliminary budget will be presented for board approval on January 21, 2016. The Act One index for 2016-17 is two point four percent. Items recommended for budget for the action meeting tonight are the October 2015 budget transfers, 2016 budget calendar, the turn fourteen callback agreement, and the LERTA proposal. Our next meeting will be on Monday, January 25 at 6:30 PM. And just for the board's reference, although we did discuss the LERTA meeting at the Finance Committee, I had asked the representatives to be here should any board member have any questions, although I believe we've discussed it thoroughly several times now, at least three times now, if they're here anyway, if anybody has any questions. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of finance this evening? Safe Schools, Mrs. Murphy.
I don't have a report. I have Mrs. Charnock. I guess I'll... Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last board meeting. The next meeting of the Safe Schools is scheduled for 5:45 PM on Monday, January 11, prior to the ECP meeting at ESC. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Safe Schools this evening?
What time does it start?
Five forty-five, I believe, right?
Yes, five forty-five. Thank you.
Personnel. Mr. Kerr.
I have that, too.
No, I'm right, it's over this way.
The Personnel Committee met in executive session on December 1, 2015, from 5 to 6 PM to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you. Support Services, Mayor.
We have not had a Support Service meeting since the last board meeting, so our next meeting will be held January 25, 6 o'clock here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Support Services this evening? North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
The foundation had a great month. First, we participated in the North Penn versus Lansdale Catholic Alumni Flag Football Game. What a great day it was, and more than one hundred football players and forty cheerleaders from both schools and sixty former marching knights geared up for the event. In fact, about one thousand people attended the Thanksgiving Day game. It is sure to become a new tradition, not only for North Penn, but also for the entire school district. The foundation held a fifty-fifty at the event where we raised a few hundred dollars. This is just the tip of what we raised in the last month. We also brought in over two thousand dollars with our annual appeal and the staff tribute program. But a highlight of the month was Starry Night over North Penn. This sold-out event raised more than one thousand dollars for the foundation and was a very fun night out for all those involved. The foundation is currently planning a similar event for high school students. Unfortunately, the foundation learned this month that Hall &amp; Oates concert is not going to happen. That being said, the foundation hopes to continue its support of North Penn's fiftieth anniversary in any way that it can. More than thirty-five mid-year grant applications were reviewed early December, and I am thrilled to report that we will support close to twenty thousand dollars in innovative projects. This is in addition to the fifteen thousand dollars already approved for the current school year. Once again, we are supporting a wide range of subject areas and grade levels. I want to thank the educators who took time to apply, knew we were going above and beyond, and inspiring and motivating our students, and they were really just unbelievable, unbelievably creative, sometimes more than others, but this year they were really fantastic. And I want to give one last pitch to all the online choppers out there. Please support the foundation through the Amazon Smiles Program. When enrolled in this program, new and current Amazon choppers can choose the foundation to earn five percent of every purchase they make. All you have to do is to go SmileAmazon.com and choose the North Penn School District Educational Foundation. It's simple, free, and supports our students. Up next for the foundation is the foundation February. You will hear more about this in the new year. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Liberowski. I would also like to add this evening that we sadly accepted Josie Charnock's resignation, and we thank her profusely for all the work you've done in the last few years for the foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. It was an honor and a pleasure to be on the board.
End of report. Any questions for the North Penn Educational Foundation? North Monco Technical Career Center, who's got the report tonight?
Mr. Shapinski, there is no report. We did not meet since our last board meeting. However, our next meeting is on Monday, December 21.
After...
After our holiday dinner, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
I also have a no report. The IU met early in November because of Thanksgiving, and we do not meet in December. So we'll have to wait until January. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move forward with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of the amended board policy 5111 regarding students' attendance, age of entrance, per item 7315A through C.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
I recommend approval of the 2016-17 budget calendar, per item BA4.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the proposed preliminary budget display and advertising, per item BA5A through B.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions about the advertising of the preliminary budget? Will be on the website?
Yes, we're going to post a preliminary budget on December 31, prior to midnight.
I'd like to see who's working that time. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
I recommend approval of authorizing the administration to work with Public Financial Management Incorporated as independent financial advisor. Eckert, Siemens, Sharon, and Malo LLC as bond counsel and the solicitor to proceed with the issuance of up to ten million dollars of general obligation bonds, a proceeds of which will be used for various capital improvements, including paying the costs of planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping additions and improvements to the Montgomery Elementary School.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, second by Mrs. Parkowski. Comments or questions?
In regard to this, we do have a presentation, and we'll call on Mr. Scrackey to make the necessary introductions.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Over the past several months, we've been working with public financial management, developing several scenarios to try to analyze the most advantageous borrowing situation for the Montgomery Elementary School project. The estimates for that project are approximately twenty-five million dollars. We've also been presenting those scenarios to the Finance Committee, and we do have a recommendation. And with that said, I'd like to refer you to the blue handout at your place, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Sheer from Public Financial Management. He'll walk you through the document and then explain how we came up with the recommendation that's on the agenda this evening.
All right, well, good evening. Nothing new in the financial markets, right? Nobody's heard anything recently happening in the news. The good news is that's not going to impact this bond issue. And I'm just kidding a little bit. Hopefully, everyone probably had heard what the Fed had done yesterday, first time in about nine years that we've seen an increase in the short-term rates. So I think from the business administration standpoint, now maybe that might actually start increasing the interest earnings a little bit. So that's a good thing for your budget, but still have a long way to go. But this evening, what I wanted to do was just briefly walk through this handout, make sure everyone does have a copy. And as was well articulated, we've been working with the administration now for quite a few months on the borrowing options to fund various projects, mainly for Montgomery Elementary, and kind of looking at the borrowing amount, looking at the timing of the need, the construction draws, factoring in, and you've heard us speak over the years about the bank-qualified benefit versus non-bank-qualified benefit, meaning a transaction ten million or under, or a transaction over ten million, kind of weighing all that into play, you'll see what our recommendation is to move forward. And that recommendation stays even with the news that we heard yesterday from Federal Reserve. Basically, that news was well baked into the financial markets for quite some time. So there was really nothing that shocked the market, which is what we were hoping for. There was not really an overreaction in any way, shape, or form. So our recommendation stays as we've been presenting. So real briefly, on page one, just a quick timeline for the new money. If you did want to proceed, this evening would be the authorization to proceed. January 21 is when we'd be looking to come back with the, to present the results of the competitive auction that we would have that day. Bond Counsel would be here that evening to provide the, kind of the thicker borrowing resolution that would lock everything into place. So that would, at that point, lock in the interest rates, and then the transaction would close. We have here estimated around February 25, which is when you could tap into the money, reimburse for some prior expenditures already made, and then that rest of the money would be available to spend throughout the year. As far as on page two, I think everyone, again, knows interest rates are very low. If you look at the bottom of page two, this is an index of the ten-year municipal, ten-year municipal bond. Now, North Penn bonds do not trade or do not price right on this index. Every school district, every city, county within Pennsylvania and other states trade differently than this index, but this just gives you kind of a good proxy. You can see overall where we are in the big scheme of things. We're going to continue to see ups and downs in the financial markets, you know, for, until the time we go to do the transaction in January, if you decide to proceed, and even for the next couple of years. So, you know, again, a lot of that volatility is driven, not really what the Fed's doing, but more or less what's going on internationally. I mean, there's just a lot of stuff that's happening out there that's going to drive the demand and supply of bonds. So we're going to continue to see those fluctuations. But overall, very good time to be considering borrowing money. Page three, we won't really get into this today, but this is more of a reference. This is all of your outstanding debt. We always like to have this in here, more or less, as a reference. I think one thing maybe to point out on this page, if we just look at column 11, sort of the top right, this is your annual principal and interest that's due on all your outstanding bond issues. And a couple of things with North Penn. Number one, you have, you do have a fairly low amount of debt outstanding, so that's very good. Credit rating agencies obviously acknowledge that, hence your good credit rating. But the structure of your debt is also very good, in that you'll see you have a pretty substantial drop-off out, you know, about five years, and then it starts to drop off more. So what you're going to see, and what I think the board has embraced over the past bunch of years with the new money financing is what's called the wraparound structure, where we're basically very little principal in the first five or so years, and then where your existing debt tapers off, the new debt will start to fill in. That, again, you have the good structure in that it minimizes interest expense, it minimizes any kind of taxpayer impact or increasing your annual running rate, so it's kind of a win-win for the school district based on the amount of debt you have outstanding and the structure of, structure of the debt. So on page four, this is kind of part of the analysis that we were looking at, and again, the recommendation would be to proceed with basically a ten-million-dollar transaction now here in January. That's the numbers in blue. And then, early in 2017, in the green, kind of do the cleanup borrowing, whatever that may be at the time, we're just estimating fifteen million, and that gets you then to the total of twenty-five million in debt for this project. Column six, down below in the blue, is the local effort. That's, again, both principal, interest, less the state's reimbursement of your debt service as well. So that's why we call that the local effort impact. And then you go to the right, that would be then including the fifteen-million-dollar local effort, and then in column eight, you can see what the total impact, including your existing debt plus the new debt that you'd be borrowing for Montgomery Elementary. A couple of the things that we looked at when analyzing whether or not to do one issue or multiple issues, basically, if assumptions hold out, which we think they will, we're coming pretty close to it, this plan will save the district about eight-hundred thousand dollars or so in interest expense by breaking it into transactions and realizing that bank-qualified benefit. And you will see also, down on the bottom of page four, that we have footnoted the interest rate assumption that we are assuming. For budgeting purposes, to this point, we have been a little conservative with these interest rates. You know, again, we don't know where things were going to be, as we've been talking about this for the past few months. So I'm assuming that, you know, the market holds out, everything looks good in January, which it typically does. You're going to see interest rates lower, therefore, the debt service impacts and local effort impacts on this page are going to look a little bit better as well. And then finally, on page five, page five is just kind of estimate of the total debt service schedule that we'll ultimately have on the 21st after the bids are received to come present to you. But right now, you can just see in column two, the principal being amortized totaling to ten million, the estimated interest rates in column three, and then again, more the detail of how everything fits in. So what this is, this right here is showing an average interest rate on page five of about three percent. Again, we expect it to come in, you know, quite a bit lower than that. Typically, we have worked with the district to try to get to this January position of locking in the rates. A lot of times, you'll see what we call the, or realize what's called the January effect, where there's not a lot of deals out in the market, and so therefore, there is a high demand that lowers the interest rates even more. What adds to that is the very good credit rating of the school district, which entices even more investors to participate in your auction. So, again, we're just being a little bit conservative at this point. We do expect numbers to come in better. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have with the numbers.
Scott, just very minor, very, very minor. Our first payment is going to be September 1, 2016?
September 1, 2016, correct.
Okay. Do you remember why? Because on page four, on the color, you have zero for June 30, and I'm wondering, every little bit counts for interest, you know, why are we waiting? Like, why not start in June? Or maybe more just too early?
Well, this is, this...
It's minor, but...
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a good point. Basically, when you're structuring the first coupon, I mean, we could move payment dates around a little bit, but investors, you know, again, there's no, there's no magic answer, but what we typically like to do is have the first coupon or the first interest payments about six months after we close on the transaction. So in this particular case, we're assuming a closing at the end of February, so that more or less takes us to September 1. But, you know, again, we can work with your business office on modifying this a little bit, but this is kind of the conventional structure, but, yeah, we're happy to...
I'm just curious, because I saw, I saw it was like blank for June, and then I saw this.
Yeah. I mean, again, because I don't think anything was budgeted for the current fiscal year, you know, we just kind of kept it out of the current fiscal year and went with that same six-month normal period from the time the transaction settles to the first payment. Sometimes investors went to very, what we call a short first coupon, where from settlement to when the first interest period occurs, it's very short. Sometimes investors don't look too favorably upon that. Same with a very long first coupon, if it's nine months or eleven months, sometimes they don't look favorably. So we try to structure this, again, to attract the most amount of investors out there to drive the interest rate down a little bit. But again, we're happy to have discussions.
If you guys, I'd just be curious if, when you get a rant to it, maybe if the holidays...
Sure.
If you could at least let the Finance Committee know, how much, how much of difference would there really be? That's all. Thank you.
I mean, the other thing, and I don't think this is necessarily a concern of North Penn right now, but the... Penn right now, but the, if, if we start moving it up, we, we like to tailor our, the payments. So right now, we have the principal payments occurring in March. You know, whether it's due to slow real estate taxes coming in, whether it's due to state budget impasse going, you might not be getting the money that you're expecting. We try to defer some of the stuff a little bit later in the fiscal year to allow for the monies to be there. Now, again, North Penn's in a good situation where you do have reserves on hand to cover that, but that all just kind of goes into-
Yeah, you guys work it out.
Yep, happy to do that.
And one final thing. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on the twenty-first of January now. Unfortunately, I will be out of town, but my colleague, probably John Frye will be here.
Phone bids?
Hmm?
Are you doing it by phone?
Uh, the internet.
Okay.
Yep. It's basically an auction, eBay.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, let's move forward with the rest of our agenda.
Thank you. I do recommend approval of the guidelines establishing the formation of the Knights of Honor Recognition Program, provided in BA six, A through E.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of a deduct change order, G C six, to Pirato Builders Limited for the York Avenue Elementary School Renovations and Additions Project at a change of contract amount of a credit of forty-eight thousand, eight-hundred forty dollars for miscellaneous credits and back charges to close out the project per item eighty-eight fifteen.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Murphy. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I recommend ratification of the electricity transaction with Direct Energy Business for the electricity supply for all North Penn School District accounts for the period starting June two thousand sixteen through June two thousand nineteen, as listed per item eighty-nine fifteen.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the Mallei LLP Financial Audit and the Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen, ending June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Porkowski. She got you. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you to all the donors. They're wonderful guests. Really appreciate it.
I agree. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA seven, A through B, as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of personnel items listed A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Asio?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr?
Porkowski, Kerr, slash, Kerr.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA ten.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Leonard, second by Mrs. Charnock. She beat you.
I could hear it over here.
Turn yours, turn your thing on. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA eleven, A through B, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Porkowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA twelve, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mrs. Porkowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. You've done a wonderful job in two thousand fifteen.
Thank you.
Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Scrocky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This treasures report is through the month of November two thousand fifteen. Cash receipts for the month of November totaled eight million, one hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Disbursements for the month of November totaled fourteen million, four hundred seven thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, leaving the district with available funds through the end of November totaling one hundred forty-nine million, six hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars and ten cents. End of report.
Thank you. Would you move forward with sanction and approval of invoices?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Recommending ratification of disbursements for the month of November two thousand fifteen in the amount of eighteen million, two hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Porkowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Could you read through budget transfers, though?
I recommend approval of the October two thousand fifteen budget transfers in the amount of seven hundred nineteen thousand, eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents per item BA one-three, A through C.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Porkowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Under Other Business, recommend approval of an agreement with turn fourteen per item BA fourteen, A through K. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions?
I would just like to thank the administration for their help in getting these resolutions to the point where we are today with, for board approval. I think it's important, I think the public, when they see that someone's going to be getting tax abatement or a tax benefit of some sort, which is what we're doing here, I think it's important for the public to know why we're doing it and how it benefits everybody in the school district. The result of these resolutions tonight is a win-win for everybody here in North Penn. We have found a way to bring additional revenue into the school district while helping a small business grow and grow here in North Penn, and we've done it in a way that will help all other taxpayers moving forward and reduce the tax burden. And I think it's important for the public to understand how we've been able to do that. And so if Mr. Scrocky's willing, I'd, I'd like to ask him to speak for a moment and just let the public know how we've been able to accomplish what we're accomplishing by approving these resolutions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. D'Asio. First off, I think it's important to note that the property in question has been vacant for over twenty years.